Two thirty-one, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Board of Adjustment of the Township of Franklin has been provided. Board members, applicant, professionals, member of the public, please speak directly into microphones so that our recording secretary can properly process minutes. Applicants and professionals, please fill out the sheet on the table when you've completed your testimony. Can we call the roll, please?
Okay, so before we get started, Cheryl, Bethia, Joel Reese, Robert Shepherd, Michael Dougherty, and Kunal Lakir all asked to be excused this evening for various reasons. Richard Prokanic.
Here.
Alan Rich.
Here.
Gary Rosenthal.
Here.
Basim Verdas.
Here.
Faraz Khan.
Here.
And Chairman Thomas.
Here.
We can move on to the hearing section. Levin Properties, ZBA 240001, preliminary and final major site plan with C variances in which the applicant proposes to construct a four-story apartment building at 940 Easton Avenue Somerset, block 385, lot 2.07, in the GB zone, has been carried to October 17th, 2024, with no further notification required. That October 17th, 2024, meeting will be held here at 475 Demont Lane, and the meeting's start time will be 6:30, not 7:30. Again, 6:30 PM.
We're going to notice that in the paper?
Yes, it will be noticed in the paper.
In beginning the first hearing that we'll have tonight, Carl Bambo Perry, ZBA 2400014, C variance in which the applicant seeks to build a one-story, 505 square feet addition, and 162 square foot patio at 19 Montrose Avenue Somerset, block 332, lot 5, in the R-10 zone. And you are the applicant?
Yes, I am.
All right, first we'll slur you in.
Mr. Perry, raise your right hand, please. Testimony you're about to give is truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes.
Going to have to speak up a little.
Yes.
Thank you. State your full name, spell your last name for the record.
Carl Bambo Perry, B-A-M-P-O-E hyphen P-A-R-R-Y.
And you're at the address, tent, you're currently living at 19 Montrose Avenue.
19 Montrose Road, Somerset.
Okay, what we'll do, as we usually do with homeowners, is start with Mr. Healy, will give us a summary of what the application is, what's proposed, and then you can let us know when he's finished if that's what your intention is, and if there are any differences or whatever, we can talk about that.
Thank you.
All right, so Mr. Chairman, as you stated, it's the properties on Montrose Road, it's in the R-10 single-family residential zone. The property is currently occupied by a single-family, split-level home. What this plan that's up on the screen is showing is the, this is the existing home here, and then it's showing the, I don't know why it's doing that, but that blocking, but there's a 500-square-foot, one-story addition to the right rear of the house. On the architectural plans that were submitted, it shows basically the floor plan. Looks like no additional bedrooms, a breakfast area, bathroom, and a mudroom, again, to the rear of the house. There are a few variances that are, that's why they're before you. It's in the TRC report. Building coverage, impervious coverage, and a rear setback. The requirement for the rear setback is 40, and they're proposing 31. So that's basically it. Architectural plan, so that's the floor plan, and then this is the, basically, the elevation showing that it's a one-story addition to the rear of the house.
How are we on the impervious coverage numbers?
The impervious coverage there, the max is 30, and they're proposing just short of 40, 39.94. Building coverage is 20 max, and it's 26.44.
Okay, is that an accurate description?
Yes, that is accurate.
Is there anything that can be done in terms of reducing the impervious coverage? Is there any?
I think, you know, looking through the plans, the patio piece could probably be done with. You know, the issue here is, we have my parents, who are now with us in the house, right, and also our college students, who have returned back from school. And my parents climbing and going upstairs to the bathroom upstairs is very difficult for them. So the idea is, you know, hopefully, just make it a little more comfortable for them, you know. So in regards to space, the patio area, if need be, could be eliminated from the plans.
So what you're saying is making it smaller kind of negates the reason a little bit for putting the addition on in the first place?
Exactly.
And in terms of the rear yard setback, is it possible to be wider on the addition as opposed to deeper, or is there anything that can be done to reduce the nine feet a little bit?
In regards to the plans, you know, I'm looking at, while we look at it, I know the part that has patio piece, that's also taking part of the space, right? I feel it could be eliminated. In regards to the space inside, you know, to have them move around freely, be able to use the bathroom and different things like that, you know, that space is kind of needed. That is why we're making that ask to have it.
Okay, any board questions?
I have a question. I think you said if you remove the patio, that is an option, or that is what?
If, if need be, right?
And would, how would that change the impervious coverage?
Because it's in the plans.
No, no, sorry, how much would it change the impervious?
It would reduce.
To the requirement, or?
I think, was it 100 and something feet?
It would reduce it by about 2%.
Okay, so still would need a?
Yeah, there'd still be the variance, yeah.
What about the concrete behind the shed? There's concrete behind your shed?
Behind the shed, no, it's actually on the side, oh yes, behind the shed, there's a little patio, little concrete piece.
And what is that for?
That was just for like the seats, patio area, like storage and things like that.
Is that something you could take out and give you more?
If need be.
Would that be better than the pad? That'd be better to take that out than the patio?
It'll be more disturbing, you know, like more, it's more disturbance. I'd rather do, if possible, do the piece that has not been constructed already, because it's probably going to be about the same amount of space anyway. So since we're looking to build it, it would make sense not to even build it, instead of having someone break all that concrete up and take that out.
Any other questions?
You have a garage?
Yes, yes, there's a little garage, yeah, packed with things.
What do you have stored?
Everything, in the garage.
What do you store in it?
When I say everything, like, old weights, the kids.
Nothing flammable?
No, 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 no.
Anybody else?
Mr. Healy? Mr. Healy, if the patio were to be removed, what would be the setback from the rear yard?
Well, the patio, the patio doesn't factor into the setback. The setback is to the structure that's proposed, which is the addition.
Okay, if there's no further questions, we'll open to the public. If there is anyone here who wants to ask a question or make a statement, do so. If there's not, so we'll close. And is there anyone who would offer a motion? No, notices were sent, right? That's automatic notices?
Well, the applicant noticed to?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure. Nobody's here, one way or the other, so.
We have great neighbors.
That's, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to, okay, ZBA 2400014, in which the applicant seeks to build a one-story, a five hundred square feet addition, and the C variance in which the applicant seeks to build a one, I'm sorry, and a 162 square foot patio at 92 Montrose Avenue in Somerset.
I'll second.
I believe the applicant is indicating you want to approve the patio as well?
Yeah.
And there was a second?
I'll second, yes.
Richard Prokanic?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Basim Verdas?
Yes.
Faraz Khan?
Yes.
Chairman Thomas?
Yes, good luck with it.
Thank you.
Next, we have Marvell Builders LLC, ZBA 240008, C variance in which the applicant seeks to construct a new two-family home at 5 Delar Parkway, Franklin Park, block 34.05, lot 50.03, in the CR zone.
Good evening, members of the board. My name's Matt Flynn from the law firm of Savo Shaw, Corsini, Warner, Gillespie, O'Grady, and Fisher, and I'm here representing the applicant, Marvell Builders LLC. The applicant is here tonight to demolish an existing non-conforming residential structure and replace it with a two-family townhome. As you'll hear in testimony, our lot is narrow and will require some minor variance relief from the board for front and rear yard setbacks. Property is located in your CR cluster residential zone, where two-family dwellings are permitted uses. The lot is designated as block 34.05, lot 50.03, in your tax records, and better known as 5 Delar Parkway. Notice has been provided pursuant to the municipal land use law, and with me tonight, I have two witnesses, our architect, William Duran, to describe the proposed structure, and our planner, Paul Ritchie, to testify about the variances. So with that, unless there are any legal questions, I'd like to call our first witness. Mr. Bernstein, we have him sworn.
Testimony you're about to give, truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
State your full name, spell your last name for the record, by whom you're employed, and your credentials.
William Doran, last name is D-O-R-A-N. I have a firm in South Brunswick, 3D Architecture. I graduated with a degree in architecture in 1980, sorry. I've been licensed in the state of New Jersey since 1987. I've been in front of this board as an expert witness and many other boards throughout the state.
I think we can qualify you as an expert.
License still current?
Excuse me? Yes, current license.
Okay, Mr. Duran, can you describe the structure we're proposing on this property?
So we have a two-family, or two townhomes, each around 23, just over 2,300 square feet, each with a two-car garage. We have a bedroom on the first floor with a full bath, living, dining, kitchen, and then we have three bedrooms upstairs with a loft. The front of the building looks like that.
And we'll have to mark that as Exhibit A1 for the board?
Yes.
Do you have a pen? You want to do it?
And Mr. Duran, could you identify the author of the exhibit and when it was, who did it and when it was done?
This was done in my office. It's a colored rendering of the front of the building.
Done when? What's the date on the exhibit?
120, well, 123, 123, 24. A1.
Can you just describe some of the materials that are proposed?
Yes, we're proposing a stone, stone stucco and board and batten facade, basically a gray scheme, light gray scheme, with a gray and black roof, black windows, and accented with some metal, black metal roofs.
And this structure, as detailed in the rendering, matches the drawings that you submitted to the board?
Correct.
And if approved, the structure would substantially look similar to the rendering that you've provided to the board?
Yes, it will.
Okay, I have no further questions of this witness.
Anything from the board? How many two families are in the area, two-family houses?
Our planner is going to testify on that.
Okay, good. Any other? Okay, next one.
How many bedrooms again, Mr. Duran?
Four.
How many bathrooms?
Just double-check.
Three full baths.
The loft is for what reason?
It's open, so when you come up the steps from the first floor, it's, it's open area there with a couple of windows. The laundry room is, there's a little laundry closet that's off that loft area.
And we would agree as a condition that that would never become an additional bedroom? It's solely for office play space?
Yes.
The applicant's offered that stipulation for the record?
Just a question then for Mark. It's nice, we appreciate that offer to agree to that. How is that enforceable?
It's, it's hard to enforce, but I'm a little less worried about it in this situation than in others, because you have to, in order to access the other bedrooms, you need to walk through it. So I think in order to provide, you know, and other times, you know, I'll be honest with you, the architects, they'll put a room off to the side, and they'll call it a den or an office, and you know what it's going to be used for. Here, again, it looks like to me like the stairs come up into that loft. You have, is that a washer and dryer closet?
Yes, that's a laundry closet.
Washer and dryer closet, and then you have to walk through that to get to the two other bedrooms. So could a future homeowner do it? Could they put a bed in there? I'm sure they could. Just by the layout, I'm a little less concerned about this than I am in other situations, where again, it's just a set-alone bedroom, and just by the nature of the, you know, the label that the architect put on the plan, it's magically not a bedroom, but a loft, a den, office, so.
How many square?
I think, sorry, I think we can call it a loft, well, I did call it a loft because we left it open, right? The staircase is open to that loft space, we have the laundry room off of it, so.
Are these going to be rental or for sale?
I believe for sale, yes.
How many square feet in each unit?
Twenty-three and change.
And it needs to be that big, just that's how the rest of the neighborhood is, or it's, or is it, like, how does it fit into the rest?
Yeah, our planner will talk about the surrounding area and further his proofs and testimony with respect to that.
To guide the board a little bit, just so you understand why this is here, and I think the attorney touched on this at the beginning, this isn't a CR zone that permits two-family homes. So I just wanted to, when you're looking at this presentation, just understand, they're here for setback variances. There's a front setback requirement and a rear setback requirement, but it is a permitted use, and it does comply with building coverage and impervious coverage. Now, perhaps the size and shape of the building, perhaps you, you know, I don't, you're going to have an architect, I mean, engineer speak?
No, just a planner, not an engineer.
Is somebody going to present the plot plan?
We had hoped that our engineer could make it tonight. She had a scheduling conflict.
Okay.
So we're sticking right now to architecture and planning, but we submitted the variance plot plan as part of the record.
Okay, but somebody has to speak to the plot plan, because the plot plan shows the setbacks and the dimensions of the building relative to the, to the, to the property.
I think Mr. Ritchie, as a professional planner, will be able to read the plan and be able to analyze it for purposes of the setbacks.
Are you going to present that, that plot plan to the board as an exhibit?
Well, it's in the record, right? Because it was in 10 days in advance.
It is part of the record.
But it's not in evidence. There's a distinct difference between simply submitting something for the board to have as part of the record, and here, testimony regarding it. Leaving aside the plot plan, you're also seeking issues relative, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, on stormwater and trees.
Well, they, typically, since this is a two-family home, and they don't, so they don't need site plan approval, but they do get, they do need building permit approval, and they get plot plan review. They will have to address Chapter 222, which is trees, they will have to address stormwater. They don't need that approval as part of a site plan approval from this board, but they will have to address it administratively by staff. I know that the Environmental Commission did have one comment about the extent of tree removal, so.
We were going to, if I may, we were going to stipulate to providing the tree survey as a condition of approval, and obviously, if pieces of your ordinance, as they relate to applying for building permits, apply to this project, we have to comply. So, you know, because we're exempt from site plan as a two-family home in front of the Board of Adjustment, what we had hoped to do tonight is really present what the home would look like, and the planning proofs to further the variance requests, which again, are not, they're not related to engineering, they're related to the setbacks of the property. If you look at the property, it's fairly wide and shallow, which is why we're, we need about a 10-foot setback variance for the front yard. So to the extent that we can agree to any conditions of approval to ameliorate any post-resolution concerns, we'll do so. We're not attempting to, you know, hide the ball or anything, it's just because it's a site plan exempt application, we didn't think we needed a professional engineer, because if it was a single-family home, I don't, I don't know that that would be required.
Again, I think it gets, and I defer to Eric, but I'm, and we haven't heard from the planner yet, but I would think somebody, they had to present something related to the site, because the, the variances that you're seeking are not shown on there. I mean, they have to somehow communicate and show to the board beyond verbally what you're proposing, and what, and, you know, setback of the, of the building relative to the property. If the planner can do that, I defer to Eric.
Let's see what the planner's testimony is, and we'll see where we are.
All right, so I'd like to call Mr. Ritchie if there are no more.
This might be premature, but you have title to the land.
We're a contract purchaser.
Sorry?
Oh, you, you do have title, okay, we have title, yeah.
You have title to the land?
They don't have to be the owner, though.
Just to follow up on?
Well, they have title.
No, they don't, they don't have to have title to the property. No, they can somebody?
At least have to have, we have document, if they were a contract purchaser, they'd have to submit the documentation to the planning office to show.
Again, I'm just, I'm just trying to establish, just so you understand, most applications that come before the board, a lot of them are not the property owners. They're under contract to purchase it, subject to approvals, but we have an affidavit as part of our application process, that the owner has to sign an affidavit that they're consenting to the application being made on their property.
Just to follow up quickly on the loft versus the bedroom idea, you, we put it in as a condition that it can't be used as a bedroom. I'm buying that. How are you communicating it to me as the buyer, that I can never use that as a formal bedroom?
The resolution of approval, should it always be pulled by the real estate, the Realtor for a purchaser? I know, you know, that's custom practice, that a Realtor will go and get a historic record of the property from the township in order to pull the resolution.
Have an issue in putting it in the deed?
No.
Okay, just making sure, all right. Any other questions?
I have one. I have one. Are you subdividing the lot, or that's not on the table?
No, because the two families permitted.
Okay.
So we don't need, we don't need a subdivision. All we're doing is taking a single-family home that's in the right rear of the property, demolishing it, and then putting this structure in the middle of the property.
And are there any basements with that structure associated?
There are basements? I will think there would be a basement, yes.
For both of them?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have a plan for it?
Plan, no. We normally wouldn't do a basement plan for zoning board approval. We would do it in our next step in the construction permit drawings.
I don't have an issue with that, if you're looking at me. I mean, as long as it's not going to have bedrooms in it, it's going to be fine.
No bedrooms?
There'll be, it'll be an unfinished basement, and if, if the owner, either during construction or once purchased and in the future decides to finish the basement, they'll come in and get a building permit. And if, if it's a problem.
In condition.
It's fine.
No bedrooms in the basement.
I mean, the construction code wouldn't permit that, because there's no exit. No, it would. It would. So just to be clear, if we were, I do it all the time, we put bedrooms in basements, and we put egress windows in. But you can, you can put it as part of the, put it in the deed. It's acceptable.
Thank you.
Anything else? Next.
I would call Mr. Paul Ritchie, as a professional planner.
Before I swear, Mr. Ritchie, and who's going to address the TRC comments?
Jointly, we will.
And the Environmental Commission. We had any other comments from anybody other than those? Mark?
Review comments, too, yeah.
Take the review in committee. Testimony you're about to give, truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth, so help you God? Mike, I need the mic.
I do.
State your full name, spell your last name for the record, your employer, and your credentials.
My name is Paul Ricky, R-I-C-C-I, self-employed Ricky Planning LLC. I've been licensed as a professional planner since the year 2000. I have a master's degree in city regional planning that I received from Rutgers University in 1997. I'm currently a municipal planning consultant for six towns. I testify regularly in front of boards. I've been qualified over 250 boards throughout the state.
We can accept you as an expert.
Thank you, sir.
License current, just for the record?
License is current, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Ricky.
Before I even attempt to even address through a plan that I didn't prepare, I did prepare my own exhibit, and if that's not sufficient for the board to evaluate the area and what we're doing, I will then maybe potentially, if the board allows me to, maybe address an exhibit that was not prepared by myself, if that's okay.
Start to lay the exhibit, we'll mark it, and the board can decide.
Twenty copies. I just check it up. Yeah, thank you.
Not enough copies of that, for sure. If they need it, I'll, I'll be fine.
I have plenty of copies.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Ricky, before we mark this, why, why don't we mark this, Mr. Chairman, unless you have a problem? A2?
Okay.
If you would, for the purpose of the record, Mr. Ricky, indicate what A2 is, who the author is, et cetera.
A2 was prepared by myself, consists of three sheets. The first sheet is entitled Exhibit 1. It is an aerial photograph that was prepared in a geographic information system. It shows the lot line, the subject property outlined in orange. I took the plot plan or the variance plan that was prepared by, by the engineer, and I geo-referenced the building onto the subject property, so the board could evaluate the size, the location of the building in comparison to other buildings in the area. We also show the zone district boundary in red. You can see the CR and NB distinguishing the, the zone lines there. And then following that, there are, there are eight pictures taken by myself. These pictures were taken yesterday, and they show the description, they show the subject property and some surrounding properties in the area. the subject property and some surrounding properties in the area.
So why don't you take the board through your planning analysis using Exhibit A2?
Sure. And as stated, the variances that are, that are being requested is to allow a front yard setback of 25 feet, where 35 feet is required, and it's allow a rear yard setback of 47.8 feet, where 50 feet is required. I note that you can see the building to the left of the, of the white building on the, on the aerial exhibit, where 10.4 feet is, is existing. So that rear yard setback is bringing, brought much more into conformity. By, by looking at the exhibit, I know some board members asked some questions about the area. Because we're a permitted use, I didn't really do a full land use analysis, but I, you see in the pictures, this is a zone that allows two-family homes, single-family homes, townhouses, as well as garden apartments. So when you look to the left on the aerial, if you see north is essentially turned to the left, the lots to the left is almost the identical size as the subject property. It's not that this is a prevalent lot size in this, this specific area, but there are two lots that are very close in, in dimensions. And part of the reason that I georeferenced the building on the lot is so that the board can see how it related to the, to the, to the lot to the north. And while to the right, to the south, that's in a commercial zone, and that's a commercial property, you can see from a streetscape perspective how the front yard setbacks are fairly consistent on that portion of the street. If anything, the, the building, the residential building to the north is located closer to DeLar Parkway, and the rear yard is also located closer. You can see across the street, the, the numbers represent the block and lots at the intersection of, I'm not sure how to pronounce that, but DeClaire Lane and DeLar Parkway, Block 3405, Lot 40.806, you can see how it, it shows the building lines in there. Those are two-family homes across the street. Also, to the building to the left, Lot 48.04, that has two-family homes. And then, if you look all the way to the bottom left, we only show a portion of that property, but that's Lot 52.06, that contains apartments on it, and I show a picture of it that I'll describe in a moment. Maybe let's go through the, the pictures now. Picture number one is a view of the subject property. There's a dilapidated, abandoned house on the property. It's in very poor condition. I do not know how long it's been abandoned, but, you know, I think the pictures show that this is a house and a property that's in need of redevelopment and repair. Picture number two shows that as well. Picture number three shows the, some of the wooded nature of the lot. The building is located, that's at the intersection with the DeClaire Lane, located in the right portion of the picture. And then we have a picture of the building that I called to the north on the lot that I described as being almost of identical size. And then, when I spoke to the, the apartments to the building of the lot that's just still further north on the, on Lot 52.06, that's the, the apartments that are located on the subject property. And then, there's another form of, of multifamily, which I don't show on the aerial, this is, this is essentially a cul-de-sac road, relatively short road, and at the end of that cul-de-sac, there's more multifamily housing. And then, across the street, in picture number seven, is a similarly styled two-family home to the subject property. You can see that on the aerial on Lot 48.06 on, on the, the front page. And then I just showed a picture, we had a fill of space of the commercial land use at the intersection of Route 27 and DeLar Parkway. We're seeking the variance relief both under the C1 and C2 criteria. The, the law states that where a lot has exceptional narrowness, shallowness, shallowness or shape of a specific piece of property that results in undue particular hardship, the applicant is entitled to a hardship variance. And I'm also going to demonstrate that the way that the applicant has designed this site also results in improved zoning for the tract. The reason that the variance is plainly stated or needed is that while this lot meets the minimum lot size for the district, it's slightly oversized at 26,626 square feet, where 24,000 square feet is, is required, the zone call requires a depth of 200 feet, and this lot has a depth of 107.83 feet. Zone requires a width of 120 feet, and we have 237.96 feet. So the way the lot is just, it's wider, more than deep, and that's what's resulting in, in creating a hardship for the applicant. In terms of looking at this from a, like, from a land use perspective of why this still results in sound land use planning, if you look at, for this to conform to your zoning, the house can only be 22.83 feet in depth. We think it's a better zoning alternative to have a traditional-sized house with 35 feet in depth. By way of example, because this lot is so wide, and your zone plan allows for a 15-foot wide side yard setbacks, in theory, you can have a house that's over 200 feet wide if you meet the building coverage, impervious coverage for the lot. We don't think that's a better zoning alternative. We're, we're proposing a home in style that's consistent with the neighborhood, consistent with the house to the north, and consistent with the, the homes across the street. But I wanted to just give you a couple percentages. Like, based on your zone plan, if it requires 35-foot front yard and a 50-foot rear yard, on a 200-foot lot, that represents 42.5% of the yard area. That means you can build in 57.5% of the yard area. Under this proposal, even that we don't meet those requirements, we're only building in 32.5% of that yard area. So 67.75% of that yard area will remain as open space, and that's why this home will not look overcrowded or out of place in this area. Also, we're proposing side yard setbacks of 75.9 feet and 86.9 feet, where 15 feet is required. Currently is a non-conforming side yard setback of 12.5 feet. So we're rectifying that non-conformity. And then, when I look at it overall as a planner, you know, is over, we're seeking variances, is overdevelopment occurring here? And I think absolutely that's, we're not, we're not close to that. Your zone allows a 20% building coverage. We're here 10.5%. So we're building almost half of what's permissible on this lot from a size of a home. In terms of impervious coverage, 40% is permitted, and we're less than half again at 16.3%. So I think it's clear that this does not result in overdevelopment. At a minimum advance is at least one master plan goal, maintain the diversity of housing, but encourage infill and stabilization of current residential areas rather than continuing sprawl patterns of development. So I believe that we're entitled to a hardship, a C1 hardship, to the relatively shallowness of this property. And I also believe that this application qualifies under the C2 criteria, as it results in improved zoning for the tract. In terms of areas of municipal land, you saw that this advances, provides Purpose G, provides sufficient space in appropriate locations for the needs of New Jersey citizens, even that we're requesting setback variances, I believe that this provides adequate air and light and open space due to the percentages that I, that I prescribed or indicated, and also the substantial setbacks on the side yards. Because we meet the minimum lot size for the district, this application promotes, promote appropriate population densities, and also the removal of the, the existing abandoned home on the property promotes a desirable visual environment on this property as well. I, I did, in terms of the negative criteria, I don't believe that this results in a substantial detriment to the public good, namely surrounding property owners. You can see on the aerial, we're proposing setbacks that are consistent, as I mentioned, to the property to the north on the same-sized lot. Ours are actually improved. The lot to the south is zone commercial, has substantial wooded buffer located to it. The lot to the, to the south, we'll call it south, and in southeast, is a commercial property with, with buffering between it, and across the street are residential homes that would not be impacted. So there's no reason that the public good should be negatively impacted here. In terms of the, this would not be a substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of your, of your zone plan. Again, we're a conforming lot size. We have, while we don't meet your front and rear yard setbacks, we substantially meet the side yard setbacks, and we're not proposing a condition that does not already exist in the, the immediate neighborhood, so that the neighborhood would not result in a detriment to the character of the area as well. So from a planning perspective, I think this is a very good application. It's one that adaptively uses a dilapidated structure, builds a building consistent with the type of use in the area, and it's being placed in a manner that's consistent with, you know, a, a property that, that has the same setback requirements. Excuse me, that has the same deficiencies in its, its lot that the property.
So I would open it up to the board for questions of Mr. Ritchie.
Anyone?
So, I, I think you spoke to this, but using your exhibit, you know, the applicant could have placed the home in the manner which they have, with, with the setbacks of 25 feet in the front and almost 50 feet in the rear, or they could have moved the house further back, had a larger front setback and a smaller rear setback. Can you, can you provide some testimony on why you feel the, why would be appropriate to place it in the manner in which it is, and the consistency of those setbacks with the surrounding properties?
Sure. And, I mean, this is an, an area that allows multiple uses, as I discussed, and some of the lot sizes vary significantly. I, I focused on Block 34.05, Lot 50.04, because it has an identical lot depth as the subject property. And the reason that, we don't have, you know, perfect information, the reason that I georeferenced the building on, on the lot, so as the board can understand its relationship in the neighborhood, and that the building to the north has a 25-foot or less front yard setback. So same property essentially has, so we were trying to match the similar property in the neighborhood. And then, while it's a, a commercial property at the intersection of Route 27 on Lot 50.01, you know, that building's also pulled on the side, which is a corner lot, I'm not sure if you consider that a front yard on the corner lot there, but it's also pulled close to the street. So if someone is driving down the roadway on DeLar Parkway, looking to the left, there's a consistent streetscape of housing setbacks that would remain as a result of, of this proposal.
Okay, thank you. And then I have a question. I'm going to pull up the, the submitted plot plan, because it, I think it's going to help the question. This is really for the architect. And I think this will help the board understand the, the variances. See if I can get this to show up here. System seems, there we go, seems, seems to have frozen. There we go.
Mr. Ritchie, just while we're waiting for Mr. Healy, you indicated Purpose G was met by this. Any other purposes under the?
Yes, I, I said through my notes, I don't want to. I said even that we're seeking setback variances, I believe advance, Purpose C provides light air and open space based on the ratios and the amount of those ratios that are consistent or exceed ordinance requirements. Because the lot size meets the minimum lot area, I said it meets Purpose E, appropriate population densities, and also the removal of a, of an abandoned structure, I believe promotes Purpose I to replace it with a new home that provides needed housing that's consistent with the housing.
And I is a.
Would result in a positive visual environment, desirable visual environment.
C-E-G-N-I.
G-C-E-I. That's the way.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, so now, can you grab a microphone?
Sure.
Thanks. So what this is showing, this is, you know, visually showing what the planner just spoke about, 100-foot depth lot, right here with my cursor, I'm kind of showing the 50-foot rear setback, the 35-foot front setback, and that results, because the lot is about 107 feet deep, the 20-foot, 22-feet-deep building envelope. That's, that's the area where they could build a compliant building. So my question to the architect is, in your opinion, is there a reason why a compliant building couldn't be built within that 22-foot-deep space?
Well, I think the planner answered that question. Yes. Could we design two units that fit within the 22-foot depth? But they would, at this square footage, they would be, each one is about, is 41 feet wide, so I'm not going to do the math, but it's going to be 55 feet. So 22 by 55 would really not fit the character of the neighborhood. I think the way the buildings look now, they're consistent with the widths of other buildings in the area.
Okay. So I guess that, is that speak to the C2 criteria, then? Results in a better design? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Just for the, if you could switch, sorry.
Yeah, I, I said the C1 for the hardships and the depth, but also that it results in better zoning alternative, because having a house in the conforming envelope, you can theoretically, I said, have a home that's 200 feet wide. I don't think that's a better zoning alternative than to have a house that fits in your building footprint here. I think the applicant is, and that's why I prepared my exhibit, to show how this proposed home would relate to the neighborhood, relates to the, the property to the north that's on the same-sized lot, that this is substantially consistent, but smaller and less offensive in terms of how it impacts your yard, so.
Okay. And you raised a, a number of issues addressing the negative criteria, including the consistency with the front yard setback of the adjoining properties to each side.
Yes, and I also mentioned, we're also eliminating the non-conforming side yard setback of 12.5 feet. The, the current rear yard setback is 10.4 feet, so we're at 47.8 feet. We're very close to compliance, and on a lot that's close to half of the, of the depth that's required, we're very close.
All right, thank you.
So Mark, does this mean that if the other houses are similar to, you know, to what they're asking here, that those must have been granted a variance at some point?
I, I don't know. It could be. It's possible. I don't know the history of, so it's particularly Lot 50.04, which is the property to the, I guess when you're looking at the map to the left. It certainly doesn't comply with the front yard setback as it is right now. I mean, the required front yard setback is 35 feet. That looks like it's, do you have a figure? It's, it looks to me like eyeballing, like 10 or 15 feet. So this would be setback even, you know, would be more than that. I don't know if it was a variance. Theoretically, the zoning could have been different at that time. I, those would be one of those two scenarios.
Any other questions? The review comments, you can agree with all of them?
Yes, we, we agree with, I'll go through them briefly from the TRC. One is the testimony of the C1 or C2 variance. Two is various administrative approvals that we'll need as part of the permitting process. We'll comply with all of that. Number three, I mean, for two homes, I don't know if a condo association will be required. I don't know if we could do like a reciprocal maintenance agreement or of some kind. I mean, we really kind of defer to what the board's standard practice is for that. I don't know if you usually require a condo association for just two homes on one lot, but, I mean, we'll, we can agree to some condition to make sure that the owners share maintenance responsibilities appropriately.
Yeah, I don't know if we have a requirement, to tell you the truth. It's really more of a question, just because you have common property, how does that?
I know what I've done in other towns, because I get to sit in Mr. Bernstein's enviable position in a number of towns, is require the applicant to submit a maintenance agreement that will be recorded with the property and run with the land. It'll bind all future owners for any shared. Come on, come on down.
I know you were in contact with the Sewerage Authority, so why don't you update the board?
To meet the Sewerage Authority's requirements, so, yeah.
He started testifying.
You want to testify? Sir, raise your right hand, just for testimony, about to give truth, the whole truth, nothing but truth, so have you got?
I do.
Spell, state your full name, spell your last name for the record, and your relationship with the applicant.
My name is Vijay Vyas, last name V Y A S. I am the, one of the partner of the Marvel Builders LLC, so I am one of the owner of the property.
And did you reach out to the Sewerage Authority, and what did they?
Yes, subsequent to this memo, we reached out to the Sewerage Authority, and they have communicated through email how we can apply for these separate connections. And they also advised us that the current sewer connection, which is to the existing property, should be disconnected. That has already been done, and they have witnessed that thing.
You've been here for the testimony of your planner and your architect, correct, sir?
Yes.
You agreed to all the conditions that council has indicated that he's agreeable to on your behalf?
Yes.
Thank you.
The signature block being revised, that's acceptable.
I don't know why, I don't know why we don't want to keep it in Berkeley.
As to the Environmental Commission, they mentioned that we have to comply with the ordinance that governs tree removal. We will comply. We are in the process of doing a tree survey, and we will document to the board the removal that's required as part of this application. The other comment was relating to pervious pavement on the driveways. We would like to avoid installing that, just due to general maintenance issues with it moving forward. So we would prefer to keep the driveways as designed, and just so the board's aware, and it was touched on by our planner, we're way under on building coverage and impervious coverage. So we'd prefer to keep the driveways as designed.
I don't know if the commission's asking for a different driveway or the type of driveway, but I'll leave that to the.
I mean, that's really, I have a feeling staff probably agrees with the applicant that, you know, pervious driveways for residential, they don't get maintained. So, I mean, if the board is inclined, you could say they can, you know, look into that to the satisfaction of staff, but I know our engineers not too keen on that. For a shopping center, for apartment buildings, warehouses, things like that where people are maintaining the property, but to make that requirement on a homeowner, long-term, it's just not realistic.
Especially when they're, what, less than half the impervious coverage?
They need to be flushed and maintained and cleaned in order to, you know, preserve their permeability long-term. I can't imagine a homeowner's going to do that.
I would recommend passing on that recommendation for, leave it the way it is.
Okay. So basically then, to the extent of all other comments, we will comply.
Any other questions, comments?
Public.
Okay, we open to the public. It appears there is no other public here except for, you know, witnesses or owners, so we'll close. Any further comments? Anything you want to say?
Yeah, I would just think that we'd hope the board acts favorably on this application. We feel that we have demonstrated the planning proofs that are required. We will comply with the building permitting process to make sure that the township is protected. And again, I think the real function of this application is that we're asking for the variance relief, because the way that the home is designed in our plans is, based on the testimony of our experts, just a better layout than installing a property or a home on the site that is excessively long and would not look aesthetically, aesthetically similar to the properties that are on the surrounding lots. And again, this also ameliorates a dilapidated condition in the township. There's an abandoned home there, it's non-conforming, it's more non-conforming than what we're proposing here. So not only are we trying to bring the property more consistent with what your zoning ordinance requires, we're also making a number of aesthetic improvements, supplying good housing stock to the township, and we hope you look favorably on our application.
Okay, any board comments or motion? Okay, I make a motion, we approve the application for Marvel Builders LLC, ZBA-24-00008, with the following conditions. There will be no extra bedrooms anywhere in the house or basement. What bedrooms are there, that's all that's going to be there. And they're going to comply with all the review comments except for, except for nothing. They're going to do a maintenance agreement. Maintenance agreement for, it's not a condo association, but they're going to do a maintenance agreement.
And the pervious?
And the pervious pavers. I thought I had that, maybe I didn't.
Environmental commission?
Environmental, back page. Okay, and they're going to comply with everything on the Environmental Commission except for the pervious pavement. Is there anything else? I think that's it.
You got it.
I got it, first time, wow.
I think we need a second.
I'll second. Richard Prokanik?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Yes.
Basim Verdas?
Yes.
Faraz Khan?
Yes.
And Chairman Thomas.
Yes, good luck with the project. And is there a motion to close?
So move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, meeting adjourned.